Yeah, Rosemary, this was a meeting that we added that we voted on. Ms. Joan, do I have a quorum?
You sure do.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm calling our budget workshop to order. It is 6:05 and it's February 8th, 2021. And Kathy, to have you on as RTM, if there are other RTM members, I also wanted to say welcome or to the town council, or just to the public, say thank you for attending our budget meeting. So Susan, with that said, march us through, my friend, march us through.
Kim, the minutes, please.
Even for just a budget workshop?
Well, it's on the agenda.
See, that's when I don't have the agenda in front of me. So Ms. Joan, when is the date of that meeting?
January 11th.
Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the COW minutes for January?
11th.
11th, thank you, 2021. Can I have a, I have a first? Do I have a second? I have Lee for a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Discussion, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion has passed. Did I do okay now, Joan? Can I start us off?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Thank you, my friend.
So I would say tonight's goal is to talk about the athletics, both at the middle school and the high school. And there's a couple different proposals of some staffing changes that we wanted to present to you. It has not been added to the budget, but we wanted to see the thinking of the board. And also, we have some tuition. So Denise will be joining us. I have a few things to wrap up with teaching and learning department and the student dues and fees. So that's what we're hoping we can accomplish. It's a lot, but let's see what we can do. So I'm gonna, Ken, and we did try to gather some of the answers to the questions that were posed. So we'd like to be able to spend some time with that. If we don't get it tonight, we will have some time tomorrow that we can address that because I think it's worthy of a conversation around that. So Ken, I'm gonna let you orient us and tell us what page we should start with.
Okay, so we're gonna start with athletic, which starts on page 6 dash, I'm sorry, 5 dash 64. And I will put that on the screen.
5 dash 64.
5 dash 64, 5 dash 65. And we'll go through it like we've done in the past. We'll, we'll look at these and I'll bring it off screen so we can see all the faces. So 5 dash 64 is just a synopsis. No, there's no staff FTEs allocated to this, to this group. And this is sports and student activities, that should be clear, for the secondary, so 6 through 12. 6, 5 dash 65. Here is the, the dollars. You'll see that salaries and wages are up by 1%. And that's contractual, those are all the stipends that are in our, our teacher's contract. Employee benefits follow, the taxes at 1% as well. Purchase services are up by 10%. That is being driven by, we are proposing to increase the athletic trainer from a, it was a 25 hour a week position to a 35 hour a week position to cover both high school and middle school. So that's what's driving that, that increase there. Other purchase property services down by 11% or $3,500. That's, that's mainly the pool rental. So I think we're expecting that to come in lower than what we had budgeted. Other purchase services, this is being driven by travel and increase in travel. I think we're expecting to have more away games next year. Supplies has a decrease of 25,921 or 31%. This is mainly due to last year FY21. We increased the budget because we knew that the middle school would have to replace all of their uniforms. And so hopefully that process is done this year. So next year, we expect to see a decrease, we go back to a more normal level. And then dues at 0% year over year. So it looks like we're looking for a slight decrease of $4,700 or 0.6% year over year, mainly driven by that uniform issue that we had put in last year.
All the stipings, stipends according to the teacher contract. So these are really driven, those are really agreed upon items, you know, that happen with the renewal of the contract.
We have, do we have all like the student activities?
So yeah, the, so I'd like to go next to page 5 dash 106. That's, that's where all the detail for all of the programs are. Let's see, let me get there.
Wow.
All right, I'm gonna reshare here.
Did you say that Peter was on?
Peter is on and Ted is on.
Yeah, I've seen Ted, okay.
So I'll just orient you to, to these pages and then you, you can have your discussion. Oops, that happened. So on the left-hand side are all the programs. And then the, this middle section here are the number of stipended positions. And then on the second half, the, the, the right-hand side are the dollars. And so you have the, you know, the amounts for the stipends, the associated taxes, and then non-salary expenses, which are like officials, travel, supply, broken down by programs. So pa- page 5 dash 106 are the sports programs at the high school. And then 5 dash 107, the top half is the other activities, the student activities at the high school. And the bottom, bottom half of that page is the, is the middle school program. And so I'll just point out, the high school looks like total for all those programs, a little under 670,000, 70,000. And then middle school, a little over 153,000. So total is eight, 823,060. And then there's one more page, page 5 dash 108. And this just kind of gives some history. Last year's expenses, which were cut short, the FY21 numbers, and then the budget.
And we don't have the actual numbers, though, for this year. So that might also be reduced because of what we've gone through.
Right, yeah.
And we won't know that until we wrap up this year at the end of June.
So you're anticipating the savings, right?
Stop sharing.
So.
Not expecting that all of that money will be spent just because we've reduced some of the sports because of the pandemic.
So can that, I'm sorry if I'm, this is a silly question, but can we move? Will we be able to save that money and shift it into the next year's budget? No.
And while the coaches may not be having full-on games, there's some sports that have conditioning. And so they are working out with the kids and having this conditioning and practice.
Right.
Which is different than games, but they do still, you know, work with the kids. So there is a stipend involved.
I was just thinking about travel and, you know, hiring of, let's say referees and stuff like that. We're not going to be expending that. Does that get to be shifted into the next year's budget? That's what my thoughts were.
No, you can't move from budget to budget. So, but we will have more of an understanding of what that is, what the actual cost is, once we wrap up this year's budget.
Where did Jay go?
Jay.
The only thing I wanted to mention about that, it's a good question, Liz, because unfortunately, we're not like the town council, so we don't have a rainy day fund. We can't roll it in and then take it back out. But we could vote for any surpluses at the end of the year, if I'm not mistaken, to purchase a few things, maybe on the bid list, that could reduce next year's budget. Unless you've already done all that.
No, we have not done that, but that is a good idea.
Yeah, you could, you could repurchase some things, right? It's my understanding.
Right. But not services, not salaries, nothing like that.
No, 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 you'd have to, we'd have to reallocate the accounts. And Sam's shaking his head, I think he has a list, a wish list.
Jay, does that, because it's, this is earmarked for sports and student activities, do those funds then have to be used for those? Or they could be re, yes, Kim's going, yes?
Yes, they're allocated for athletics and then they're athletic, they're, you can't like say, I'm gonna put $100 in the athletics, but actually I'm really gonna spend it on X. Like you put it, you put it in the budget for what you're gonna spend on. And I think, Jay, I mean, I actually think the point about taking the monies of anything that we've got left over, I think it really kind of depends on what we do have left over in terms of whether we can spend it or whether we need to give some of that back to the town. Because ultimately, it is the taxpayers' money that we need to be, that we fast forward. So I think that there is that really kind of good balance that in the past, we have been really good stewards around that, I think. And we've, we've given money back to the town at the end of the fiscal year.
Definitely. And yeah, there needs to be a balance. I'm not saying you spend it down to the penny.
And I think when we've taken from the health reserve too, there have been times that we've been able to reestablish that and put that back in. So that's another thing that we can think about. So that we can keep up with our health savings reserve, our health reserve. Am I saying that right, Ken? You're shaking your, yes.
Um, so can I ask a couple of questions? Increase 25 to 35, is that hours a month?
A week, 25 hours a week is what we've used in the past. We're, want to increase that to 35 hours per week.
Can you talk to me about why they want that increase?
It's, so it's two things really. Athletic trainers, we found, we, they, they don't like part-time contracts because they want, they want to allocate a full, full FTE to a contract. And so it had been difficult for us to find an athletic trainer under those circumstances. And then in addition, the middle school has never had an athletic trainer to, to help them as well. And so I think that was to help, help that program, make sure they got the right conditioning and different things that the athletic trainer would do. I think Ted and Vin could probably talk more to that than me.
Um, yeah, because I guess, yeah, hi Ted, and possibly even Peter too. Because, so if, if, is it one person that's gonna be doing it? Because then my concern is, is, is that there are both male and female sports going on at the same time. And so how do you then, I mean, if you have one, is it one athletic trainer? Or is it a full-time athletic trainer position?
Well, usually you're contacting through a, through a service, and I forget the, the name of the service. But usually they'll send one person that generally comes to your school just because they'll be familiar with the facilities and familiar with the athletes. And they'll, they'll, they'll help out both the, the male and female teams. The, the only difference is by contracting through a service, if that person's not available for a certain event, then they can bring somebody else in through their service to, to make sure that their kids have the help that they need. The other piece is, is that, you know, I think that a lot of people, when they hear the number of hours, they think like, okay, every week they're gonna be there for 35 hours. The, the athletic trainer oftentimes is, is, you know, they can have one week where they maybe they're just there for a couple hours a day, where we're only running some practices. And then they could have a week where they're there like until 8 o'clock every night because we got games going on at the school and so on. So one week might be like 20 hours and the next week might be like 50. So it's, it just kind of averages out to the, the number of week, hours that you get each week. It's, and they really fit within the schedule when we need them. You know, you think about like, you know, some of the night games that we have and so on. So it's more than just, they could be working from 2 until 10 o'clock at night very easily. So it's, you know, but the, the, you know, actually, I was introduced to the gentleman that we have coming in to start and, you know, but he'll be working with all the teams and making sure that the, the training facilities are up to par.
Thank you. And then can I ask another question? And then I'll open it up to obviously who, who else is there? So Peter, granted that this is your first year, we won't, we don't know about what the activities are, but do you feel like you have what you need to offer for our students in student activities and in student? And, and, and student sports, sorry, lost the word.
Yeah, I do. You know, it's, it's based upon what we've done in years past at both schools. And, you know, it's, I wouldn't say it's on the extravagant side. There, there's certainly things that we could go above and beyond if we were to get additional dollars. But I, I think we've struck a good balance.
Okay.
And it's been kind of an extraordinary, different kind of year to be rolling this out anyway, so.
Absolutely. You know, and, you know, we're, we're looking forward and projecting to next year being a heck of a lot closer to, to normal.
Yep.
Enough with this new normal.
Yeah.
So Susan, Ted and Peter, is there things you want to talk about in terms of the athletic director? Is this where we're gonna talk about this? Or were you?
This is a good place. You actually have a little list, don't you? Was there anything else, though, that we wanted to talk about with regard to the athletics or the activities? Ken?
Could you tell me what page you're on?
5 dash 106, 5 dash 107, I think is.
That's the stipend things. And then we were looking at the budget and that's 565?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, 564, 565, you're right, 6565.
So we're, we're flipping between those two things, Rita.
So I know you have a nice little chart, Ken. Did you wanna?
Yeah. All right, let me share that. Okay, is this the one, Susan?
Yep.
Yep. So, so these are some additional positions that, that Susan had spoken about. And so one of the things that we've talked about is, is the full, the athletic director becoming full-time and covering both the high school and middle school. And so this line six here is, is just a calculation of what that would do to the budget. You know, we're, we're making some assumptions here on what the costs would be. But we're just, we're plugging in the, the dean's salary from the, from the admin contract. And we wouldn't have to pay the current AD teacher salary in stipend. And so that would be an additional $20,000 added to the budget.
So it would be expansion of the role. We have not negotiated at all with AGSA, but we, I think when Mike was here, he had let Peter know that we were thinking along these lines and that it would support both the middle school athletics and the high school. And I know we've had conversations with the board regarding this in the past couple of years. So I did indicate to Kim that some of this conversation was happening prior to Mike's departure. So we, we really asked Ken to figure out, well, what is that differential anyway? What are we talking in dollars and cents? So that's why he created this chart for us.
The, the other thing too, Susan, is can you speak to, my understanding was when the Gotten Middle School happened, um, we had one of our principals on, had some of the salary. Or like he was dedicated to working on, in the middle school sports. So what has happened in that position?
So that goes until the end of the year, where the administrator is continuing in his role as a school-based administrator and also doing the athletics for his salary as a principal. But next year, he'll be, his salary will go to an assistant principal's salary. And, um, you know, and we can find out what the differential is there. It may be a wash to what this is, I'm not sure. But, um, you know, I'm not sure about that, but we could find that out.
Sure, and, and just, just so you're aware, the, that reduction in the, in that administrator has already been taken into account in, in the budget we're looking at right now.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, that's right. You had said that, yeah.
If you don't mind, I just want to, it's that, you know, my discussion first with Mike and then, and then with Susan and, and with Peter as well. You know, it's, it's, Peter and I have had a lot of discussions about how do we make this more of a campus? And, and how do we really connect the, the high school and middle school? And, you know, this is one of the things that we, we had discussed. And, you know, the, the middle school athletics has to be done. And, you know, I know that there has been discussion in the past about the, the athletic director position, especially when our athletic director left last year, whether or not that should be a, a administrative position. I feel it should be. I do feel that there, there should be not only evaluation of the coaches, but it does, I think, require that, especially if it's going to be both the high school and middle school. And I think that the, you know, this will allow one person to be able to work with both the high school and middle school athletics, the high school and middle school facilities, building use, all of that. And really be able to work with the administration, both the high school, middle school, and make sure that the buildings are being used properly and the facilities are being used properly. You know, we have a number of fields on both, on both areas now and, and making sure that those fields are being used equitably, I think is, is gonna be an important piece of this. So that's why, you know, we, we felt that this was a good time to be looking at this. You know, and, and trying to really, again, see what we can do about combining our, 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 our schools into more of a campus.
And Ted, you had also brought to our attention, you know, conversations you had had around converting the dean to an assistant principal. And if you could speak to that a little bit. Already, the dean oversees our summer program and receives a stipend for that. So that would still continue in his role. That's a really important feature, especially now that we're bringing both middle school and high school in for summer learning. And we'll have some CARES Act money to help support that. So, um, you know.
This actually came from, I'm sorry, Susan, I didn't mean to cut you off, but this, this actually came from some conversation that, when the middle school was, was just starting out at the beginning of school year, Erin McGuire, my, my assistant principal, had been going over to the middle school to assist them. And, you know, I think that, again, as, as Peter and I talked about our, us becoming a campus, we felt that one thing we could do was, is, is having Erin, still as the assistant principal at the high school, but having her work with both counseling departments, both at the middle school and high school, could make a huge difference in terms of having, you know, a real consistency between both counseling departments to aid in the transition of students coming from the middle school to the high school and making sure that our programs are really aligned well at both the schools. I think this would be a huge first step. And really, again, that, that campus model that I think we're all looking for between the high school and middle school. That, you know, looking at that model and having Erin pick up some of those, those extra pieces, there are some of her work that I'd like to make sure is picked up by what's currently our dean position, what I'd like to become the assistant principal position. In addition to that, because of the summer duties that that would entail, essentially is adding more days onto the position, that the dean's position would become a full AP position. But the summer school position that he currently does anyway would be rolled into his salary. And he would, part of his position would be to run the summer school. Um, I think, again, as, I think that assistant principal position will pick up a lot of special ed responsibilities, will pick up a lot of responsibilities in our SRBI process at the high school, which needs to be worked on. I think the summer school will be a big part of that as well. So, again, it just, I think, makes a position that, that really fits and that the summer school fits within that position. It eliminates that need for that stipend in the, in the, in the budget, which helps with the, the offset. But again, you know, I think that the conversations that Peter and I had, it's just another step that we can take in really combining our schools and, and helping our students with the transition from the middle school to high school. And, and I know that, you know, not speaking for Peter, but I, I know that he has enjoyed working with Erin. And, and I think that, you know, having her work with both counseling departments would be a huge plus for both schools.
Thank you.
But I'm not giving her up. I just want to be clear about this.
Yeah. Understand these policies, I think is vital.
Rita, Kim, I have a whole host of questions. I think we're mixing up an awful lot of things and we need to get back to first, one thing at a time. You're mixing up an athletic director with the dean, assistant principal. These are all different roles. What the present athletic director, we have his stipend here. What are his other duties that he will no longer be doing? And how would we fill those and what positions would that be filled with?
Currently, our athletic director is working with, his teaching duties involves our Apex Learning Program.
And how heavily is he involved in that? And who would we need to hire to support that?
I don't believe we will need to hire anyone in order to support that. I think we'll be able to absorb it with, with the teachers that we have now.
So then, is, would we really need then the full-time athletic director? If, if, I, I just quite, I don't understand what his salary is, what his role is. Before, an athletic director usually taught health. You know, it was in the PE department and he was the athletic director and he also taught health. I don't quite understand what his role is in the Apex. I, I just don't understand what he's been doing.
He's been working with a number of our students that are work, doing the Apex program. And, you know, we have a lot more students that are doing it this year because of the, because of COVID. Our, our numbers have increased substantially. I don't expect that to continue once we go back into in-person learning. But the, the athletic director, again, uh, you know, I, I think it could be argued that the athletic director could be a athletic director slash teaching position. You know, if it was just the high school program, I don't personally agree with that. I think that that's, you know, a disservice to our students. But again, that's my, that's my opinion. The athletic director handling both the middle school and high school athletics, building use, field use and all of that, that is an administrative position. And, and, and that is, I think, you know, that, that's a lot of work.
Well, you know, I know Ted, you, you haven't been here, but when my children were at Fitch, when there were like almost 2,000 students there, there was the part-time athletic director who also taught health and sometimes PE. I mean, this is, you know, we have 1,000 students, we have 1,000 students at the middle school. If you combine that, I, I understand the campus thing and, and I'm not against having an athletic director. I feel there are other positions, though, that need to go by the wayside. I believe there are scheduling is, people that do schedules for, in the middle school, that for basketball games and so forth and things like that. I, I think if we, if you want this, well, there, there has to be other cost efficiencies someplace else in this budget in schedule C, in order to support a full-time athletic director.
I mean, I'd be happy to talk about some of those cost efficiencies. I mean, I'm all for, believe me, I'm all for cost efficiencies. I think that when, when I look at this, you know, for example, I, I understand where, you know, we don't want to mix positions. But, you know, what we are looking at here was, you know, we have a, a current assistant principal at the middle school who is handling the athletic director position. And that they were no longer going to be handling those duties. There was an offset in terms of their salary. And then the athletic director position obviously is an increase in salary. So we're looking at that offset. Again, I'm, I'm happy. Um, and then the athletic director position obviously is an increase in salary. So we're looking at that offset. Again, I'm I'm happy to look at other offsets in certainly there may.
I I think there are some smaller roles in here that, you know, we need to look at. And and there's also like people that uh monitor basketball games and did some scheduling, and they're all in Schedule C. There there are a lot of these small positions that I think Schedule C really needs to be looked at, especially if we have a full-time athletic director.
Well, I I could, I, again, I I have no problem looking at Schedule C at all, and I'd be happy to do that. I do want to make, you know, when we look at the number of games that we have happening in any one particular evening, uh, when we talk about the full-time athletic director, we're still only talking about one person. And when you talk about um uh athletic events going on um in in such a large school, you could have multiple events going on in one building at one time. Um, and when, you know, those were, those events require supervision, and you're gonna want to have somebody there that's running that event. Especially when you talk about the number of fans that we we bring into the school. So, you know, I I mean, obviously, I I'm sure, you know, you all being at football games know the number of security staff and so on that we require for those types of games.
Yeah, I I wasn't talking about those people. You you'll see there are other people in Schedule C that may not be.
Well, I mean, and Rita, I've been to the basketball games, and I've been to the other games as well, you know, especially before, obviously, we got shut down. And and obviously, I've been in larger schools before. So I understand that the 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 type of management that requires. Uh, now, when you talk about the athletic director position, they may not necessarily be at the school at that time. They might be at an away game that they need to be at. Uh, they could be at, we have a number of teams that operate out of different facilities, so they could be at UConn Avery Point, they could be at all of, we have multiple fields that are off school grounds. They could be at any of those fields. So again, you know, from from.
I I think I'm thinking more of, this is in a, these were middle school positions. These weren't high school positions. These were people who did scheduling at the middle school. They, this was not the high school.
Happy to look at Schedule C and 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 again, if you're talking about middle schools positions, that that'd be something that you can eat her about.
Right. That's what I was thinking.
I just want to clarify Schedule C is something that we do during negotiations. So that is a negotiations kind of conversation, but we can look at other kinds of efficiencies and go through that. You see, um, you know, that's a fair question, but I think Schedule C would have to be done at negotiations.
Well, we we just be, we determine the raises here for Schedule C. I mean, some of it, and you know, and whether or not a position is needed or not anymore. We we took, we did that last year. Remember, there were some redundant positions or positions that we didn't have anymore in clubs. We went over that all in budget.
Through that, I do remember that. Yep.
So, and my other question is, I don't quite understand the uh vice principal, the dean becoming a vice principal and and Aaron's duties.
Um, so Rita, before we, to your point that we've we've called many people together, I need, I I'm gonna ask for you to pause for just a second. I am not asking for you not to ask the question. I just, I want to get some more input from the board um around um the concept of the athletic, full-time athletic director, but I'm gonna come back to you, Rita, I promise. Liz.
I thoroughly and wholeheartedly support having a full-time athletic director that's going to deal with both uh schools, middle school and high school. Having been up there, working closely with, you know, when I was working with the wrestling team and stuffs of this nature. They are essential. And the one thing is that um we have to recognize is that even in the last 20 years, their role has expanded immensely, and so has their responsibilities. And we have also we're adding, you know, we have a halftime eh eh high school and a halftime middle school. That means we have a full-time if we have this one person taking over that full-time. So I don't think there's a, personally, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's an essential part. I also think it's essential because with, if you look at other school districts, most of them have a full-time athletic director. And a lot, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, we're, we get a little bit behind with our 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 sports. And I just want to, you know, I want to endorse that.
Thank you, Liz. I appreciate that. I I appreciate that. Um, Jay, I know that you and I have had a conversation. Did you want to share your perspective at all?
Yeah, I mean, I I think there's no question if if the high school athletic director is going to take over the responsibilities of the middle school and the new fields that are the facilities that are going in there, that it it makes sense. I mean, people have been arguing for years that we needed full-time just at the high school. But now that we're adding the middle school campus, um, you know, I say there's, there's no question.
Dean or Andrea Rosemary Jane?
I'm just thinking down the road, there, we may find we need even more. It's such a large program, and and we're going for excellence and getting kids involved. That is probably on the horizon.
And I agree with that. I agree with what everybody said, that um, especially since we want to to solidify the idea of a single campus. It's, it just makes sense to me in every way.
It's a pretty exciting concept, really.
And this gives us a lot of continuity between the two programs so that um this person can get to know these students from the get-go and and stay with them.
I would be interested, Susan, to see what a athletic director, full-time athletic, um, wow, I'm gonna try the sentence one more time. Speaking happened yesterday and not today, maybe tomorrow. I would like to see a full-time, a a job description for a full-time athletic director. Um, so that if we are gonna add that into the budget, um, that we actually have a description that fits that.
Yes, I can certainly get on that one for sure. I know that some of the teams around have an athletic director that also connects with youth programming. I know Ledgerd High's wrestling team became so good because they'd had the youth programming for, you know, the young kids and then the middle school program and then the high school. So I know that with the right person, you know, and the right position description, that that is an asset.
Lee?
Um, I I think that there are sort of two things going on. I would like to, you know, I don't remember, what were we paying Mark? When he was um, he taught one clock, one course. And then he was head of athletics. What were you paying him?
That'd be a question to Ken, I think.
Okay. And also, the the other part of the problem is, we're dealing with a a person that is pretty much new to us. Um, and we hired him just around the same time that we weren't having a whole lot of athletics. I I think, you know, I would like to know, um, you know, I would like to know that this is a twelve twelve-month position, pretty much, except for some vacation. Um, and I too would like to see, definitely would like to see um a a job description, no question. But we don't know him yet. We don't, we need to know what he's going to be doing.
Well, that's the job description that would have.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I'm agreeing with you.
Dean, it's, Dean, I see that you're off mute, so.
Yeah. I guess my question would be very humbly. It sounds as though from from people who've said, we need this, this is the way to go. By definition, then logically, we must have been muddling thus far. So I I can't tell because I'm not really involved in sports. Uh, and not at the high school. My kid's in marching band, and he growls that that's not treated as a sport, and he thinks that it is, et cetera. But uh, so I'm just thinking, well, we've done, we've gone this far without a full-time athletic director. So what is it that we wish we could do? Oh, look, if only we had an athletic director, we could do these things in addition to what we're doing now. Do we feel that we're hobbled, crippled, whatever epithet you want to use, if we don't go with a full-time athletic director? And I guess this this should dovetail with, well, what would the job description be? What exactly is this person uh going to be doing? Um, that's why I'm I'm hedging a bit.
Right. Do you think that Lori, I see that Lori's on. Lori, do you think, how long would that take you to sort of put together a job description? Because we already have a job description for and it's uh for part-time.
Yeah, we can put that together pretty quickly. I'll connect with Ted, and we can put something together in a matter of days.
Yeah. And remember that the expansion here, Dean, to answer your question, is that um, this position will take on both the middle school and the high school athletics. So that's where that expansion piece comes. And there might be more expansion too, and and probably will be in the job description. So, you know, we'll make sure we get that out to the board.
Okay, so then my my follow-up to that would be, I I know that there were sports played in the middle schools. And my experience and from what I've seen here is that the middle school sports don't exactly mirror high school sports. High school sports was another level up in terms of number of programs, et cetera. Uh, but middle school gave you kind of a taste. Um, so what would the middle school, in other words, same thing, what would the middle school program look like if it doesn't, I mean, forget COVID for a minute. So we had middle school sports. So if we hire the full-time athletic director, middle school sports will now look like what? Will now be transformed into what? Because we didn't have one before, but now we're gonna have one, or we're proposing one. So what will be different about middle school sports?
Dean, that's a great question. Peter, do you think, speak to a little bit about that?
Sure. You know, I I think when you think about the campus overall, in particular with the addition of those three fields, and granted, Cutler and Westside both had fields, but they're grass. And now with the addition of a turf field, the management of that, because I guarantee you that every every um, sports-related entity in town, if not the town, the region, is gonna want to have their or their their teams practice and play whenever the the schools are not. So that's one piece. Um, additionally, the the continuity in terms of the training for coaches, um, you know, CIAC is um regularly updating um, the required trainings, uh, the modules that are required to to upkeep the the coaching permits. Um, you know, and and even if you look right now, I mean, I know that we have not had our our full complement of participation in sports this year. But just the 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 level of um extra requirements that you need to go through, thinking about basketball right now, uh, for COVID precautions. I mean, the there there is things you really need to pay attention to. And and while we we may not have to deal with that a couple of years down the line, um, it's it's things like the the training, the evaluation of coaches, and and keeping that continuity, um, which would be uh an added value uh for the middle school. And I think it truly the the philosophy as well of um how coaches should be operating and and bringing up, interacting with with youth um is is a, would be an added benefit. Um, be as they they move from from six through 12. And and uh, you know, I I have seen personally, um, having been a high school coach way back. Um, it's something Ted and I share, and come, we both coached boys lacrosse. Amongst other sports. Seeing the disparity in in how some coaches coach um from your opponents to your your colleagues. There can be a great disparity in in that philosophy. And if we have someone to really set forth the the groundwork for six-through-12 philosophy um and follow through on that, I think would help our students tremendously.
Great.
Dean, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, the different ways to look at it. One is, I mean, there there are sports for the sake of the sport. It doesn't matter whether, you know, we win a championship or 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 the children are just put through a program. Uh, and they learn about a sport or athleticism or uh keeping healthy and keeping fit, all of that. Uh, there are school districts that have killer football or killer basketball. And, you know, it's great when your team just sweeps the state every year. Uh, but there are always those people who have a point, and they say, well, you know, the school isn't all about the sports, and we're putting too much money into the football team or too much money in athletics, et cetera. Um, so it all depends on, you know, which side of the of the gem you want to look at. Um, or if we have, if we have this extra capacity, administrative capacity, uh, are our um high school sports going to be improved, kind of like, you know, third-grade strings? If it ended up third-grade strings, you're gonna have third-grade strings effectively in fifth grade, and so it's gonna ripple up the up the line. Are we gonna have better middle school sports so that the high school teams are better prepared? People will be more interested in high school sports, et cetera. Are we gonna have more offerings? Will we will we be able to have more offerings in the middle school? Um, those are pretty concrete, you know, metrics that I I would look at. You know, it's just, will the middle school athletics be better because the coaching will be better, but the programs will will continue to exist as they are? Will we will we have expanded programs, more soccer, uh, more offerings, uh, or a combination of all those things? We just can't tell.
So one thing I'd just like to add to the conversation, Dean, is that um, one of the things that the middle school provides is both intramurals and more competitive sports. So a lot of times, kids will, just to get their feet wet, will try an intramural, and that might give them the excitement to do something else. So one of the things I think we talked about, Peter, was that in intramurals, we were going to before the pandemic, start with a wrestling intramural team to see if there was, you know, an interest in creating a team. So I think that because of the way that the middle school has both intramurals and the sports, it really does lend itself to the growth of the program. But I think that um we should absolutely put something in, you know, in the job description that speaks to that.
Uh, if I could just add one thing, I think, uh, Dean, you're bringing up some some good points in regard to, you know, the expansion of the programs. I think, um, you know, the the first thing I I would say about, you know, the the uh high school athletics, um, eh, from my philosophy, I really doesn't, it doesn't matter to me if a team wins 10 games, 20 games, or zero games. I if the kids come off the court or field or whatever they're doing, and they had a positive experience, they want to come back. And it really complements what they're doing at their academics to the school and is adding a positive, uh, you know, feeling about them and and a positive relationship between them and the school. I I'm all for it. And and uh, you know, I think, um, you know, the one thing I I saw, you know, and I'll I'll go back to the marching band, uh, you know, when I went to go watch them perform last year, um, and uh down in New York, you know, you know, they won that big award and everything, but but the kids were just having fun, and and they were a group, and they were really together. And and that and that's, you know, that's what was important to me. And and that's important to me when I when I watch any of the games or or even the practices. Um, from a, the athletics director standpoint, you know, um, you know, I think that the biggest thing for me is having an administrator. First of all, it's a, it's a large program. It's only gonna get larger with the with the um, with the middle school. Uh, you're talking about, I think, if I looked at the budget correctly, you're talking about almost a million dollars uh worth of programs here, which, you know, again, I will argue that an administrator should be in charge of of that big of an investment uh for the for the district. Um, my second piece is is that when you look at the um, the the needs of the coaches uh in terms of the evaluation of what they do, to make sure that our programs are not only uh that are servicing our students well, and that they're offering a positive experience, both athletics, school activities, uh, any of that. Um, it that, you know, the evaluation of those coaches, to making sure they're getting the training, to making sure that our eligibility and our compliance is done correctly. Um, all of those things are are huge endeavors, and and they only get more and more complicated every year. Um, you know, Peter was, it was right that, you know, I I've certainly been involved with athletics, and I even played in the band once upon a time, not well, but I did. Um, and uh, uh, but I've been involved. Uh, my father was an athletic director, um, so I know the kind of hours that this takes. Um, it is a huge endeavor. And uh, and if we're talking about a an athletic director servicing uh two schools, 2,000 kids. Um, I, you know, I think that we need to look at, my opinion for the board, is that uh we we need to look at this uh and uh as a as an administrative position going forward. Um, that's my opinion. Uh, you know, I I certainly uh leave it up to that.
Ted, Ted, thank you. Um.
Nice, nice, Ted. Very nice.
Andrea?
Uh, I just wanted to to expand perhaps on um Ted and what Ted and Peter said. And and when Ted said he doesn't care whether kids won, the teams win 20 games, 10 games, or no games. And that's exactly how we all feel as as principals. It's not about winning, it's about kids learning. And that goes with what uh Peter said, because I can recall a time about. And that goes with what Peter said, because I can recall a time about 25 years ago, so I'm not stepping on any toes now. But we had a new coach who was not part of the system. It was a coach from the outside. And he was going to do something that I, it's not what we did at our school. And I was talking with him about that in the in the hallway and one of the teachers heard heard it. And he said to the to the coach, "Look, she's the principal. You do what she says." I think that's what what needs to, what you know, was talking about when he said, you know, we have to have consistency about how we do things. That's I'm really for a full time athletic director.
So I I'm thinking procedurally, and then I want to make sure that all voices are heard about this because this is really talking about adding really a a full time position. Ken, can you be clear with me again about what what would be the increase for us to with the offset?
Let me share that schedule again.
Can you just give me the number?
Oh, sure. I certainly do that.
Thank you, sir.
An estimate realized that this is like ballpark.
Right.
Right.
And this is not a new conversation. I mean, we actually, our last public hearing that this past year and at the last, the year before that, was that we actually had a couple of people who talked about a full time athletic position. This isn't, we we're not talking about a new concept for us at all. But Ken?
Increase of 20,364 based upon the assumption of just using the dean's salary as a as the as the cost assumption.
Say say that one more, one more time.
Twenty thousand, three sixty four.
Okay. Okay, so that's what we would be looking at adding to our budget. And I think procedurally, Susan, before the board can do anything about that, we would really need to take a look at what the job description for a full time athletic director. And I think it needs to come back to our to our budget to look at again. But that, I think, in order for us to do that, I think we need to, I I think we need to have that. And and Rita, to your point about finding deficiencies, my sense is that if we had someone who would be dedicated to it, I would want to make sure that that athletic director then would take a look at what those efficiency efficiencies could be, specifically if we're doing a campus between a middle school and Fitch. So I I don't disagree with you, Rita, that there might be some duplication or some other things that could be taken care of. But we should, anyways.
But I think I have, you know, we just need some clarification on page five dash one oh six, five dash one oh seven, which refers to, you know, five sixty four, when it talks, when it gives you the description of the athletic director. And and my question is, if you look at line one, five, four, nine, it says other expenses, sports, athletic director, which is right now, he's receiving an additional eleven thousand, six hundred, seven hundred and sixty nine dollars on top of whatever his teaching salary is. What is that in non-salary expenses? The forty five thousand, nine hundred and forty is going up to fifty eight thousand. Why is that? And what is that for?
So that amount is it's mainly the the athletic director, but I'm sorry, the athletic trainer. But there's also something else there. Let me just
But it says on athletic director. It's 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 specifically on that line.
You're right. It should probably should be on a separate line. I I think I just put it there for just for ease of putting it someplace. But no, you're right. It should be on a separate line. It's it's thirty thousand for an athletic trainer, seventy five eighty six for student accident insurance, three thousand dollars for computer software and twenty five hundred dollars of dues.
Right. Because when you have it right there on that athletic director line, it looks like there's a big discrepancy between the twelve thousand or so for his salary, additional to the teaching salary. And then if you go down below, again, it's it's line fifteen forty nine, other expenses in the middle school. And you're going, again, there's an increase. I can't quite understand that. That's twenty two thousand, two hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, ju- just to be clear, that's not an increase. That's just the total budget for, and and once again, I just put it on that line because we we put too many lines and it gets confusing. So I I do apologize if this is confusing.
Yeah. And then there's another page where there's, the next page has even more with like a 5.9% increase and an eighty five point five percent other expenses, sports. It goes from three thousand, nine hundred and eighty five dollars in 2021 up to twenty two thousand for this coming, you know, the next year. And that I don't understand, eighty five point five percent increase.
Yeah, that that's the athletic trainer. So so the all these pages are just showing the same information in different ways. And so I apologize if it's confusing, but that increase in fifteen forty nine on page five dash one oh eight of ten thousand, two forty four is is all athletic trainer at at the middle school.
What is the actual dollar amount on that? Sometimes it's deceiving the percentage. What was the dollar amount increase for that trainer?
It went from four thousand up to twenty two thousand. And then like another additional, the increase is ten thousand, three hundred and forty four. But we never had an athletic trainer in the middle school before.
So Rita, before you came on.
Yeah, I heard you. You were talking about that. Yeah. I just think we have to be careful. I mean, you know, it's wonderful to have all these wants and needs, but I think we have to be careful what we're doing. You know, we want to increase this. We want to increase the dean to an assistant principal. I don't know. It just seems to be a lot.
Okay, so Rita, we're taking one thing at a time as you as per your request, in a lot of sense. Jane?
Yeah, I just want to speak for just a minute in abstract terms. I've given a high school teacher for many years. And I'm going to just mention what came to mind as I was listening. The building of program like this, I've seen will build a positive positive attitude, a culture, which is well on the way at Fitch now, a sense of community that the kids have, pride in self, pride in academics, and a sense of strong school community. It makes a huge difference. I saw one school, which happens to be a private school and can get a start where we are now. And it's amazing to watch. These kids can't get enough. They're they're very active out in society, helping out. The sport program is burgeoning. It's it's good. It's changing the school culture.
Thank you, Jane. I appreciate that. I I appreciate that you could get away from the dollars for just a second and kind of talk.
It's all about kids and community.
Right. So I I just think that it's, I'm going to move us to the next topic, which is the other things that are on Ken's list. How's that for being really technical? But I think in order for the for the board to really kind of consider this, Susan, I think we need to have the job description for the full time athletic. And it looks like I'm, you know, like, I will repeat myself, I'm assured, but that if we're going to change anyone else's position, that the board really needs to hold on to those job descriptions. Take a look at it. One second, Liz, I'll then I'll recognize you. But so we know that it's a twenty thousand difference, twenty thousand and odd change to move from this part time to full time athletic assistant. And maybe, once again, to Rita's point and to others' point about sort of making sure that we understand what we want to expand our budget on or what we want to cut in order to have to have these positions is is that we need to kind of keep this and keep that in mind. Liz, I'm sorry.
And so I just had a quick question. If this, if we're adding this to an A D, a full time A D as an administrator, does that mean we have to open up the administrator contract negotiations again to add a new position?
So we have a memorandum of agreement of
I just wanted to know.
No, I think that that's, Liz, I think that that is a great question. Thank you for asking.
That's why I kept saying it's an estimate, you know?
Right. Right. And and I I am assured what Rita and I are experiencing about adding an admin position. And Liz, you've lived through that, is is that the town gets very concerned about adding administrative positions to the high school. And and Peter, actually, you lived through that as well as an admin in at Fitch. So as you, so you know where we're kind of coming from and that we want to make sure that that we have the board support for to for us to move forward on that. With, I'm going to move us on to the other things. So Ken, once again, if you can kind of hear that we need to kind of take one thing at a time, that would be helpful.
I've lost it.
No, you haven't lost it. Find it.
Is that the conversion of the dean to an assistant principal and rolling in the summer school in with the with his salary? Is that what we're talking?
Stop being so smart. Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to, you know.
Line, line seven.
I would suggest that we would need the job description for that, too, to see what difference between the dean and, you know, the assistant principal. And it would maybe impact two different job descriptions, you know, for the two, the two assistant principals, if Erin was going to take on the responsibility of the counseling departments kind of officially. She she has been a great supporter of both the middle school and the high school and brings a lot to the table. And there's a lot of need for us to communicate well to the count, through the counseling team who are kids and parents about all the different opportunities that are at the middle school and at the high school. Oh, I see that as a significant need. And we've actually implemented some of that language in these grants, these pathway STEM DODA and DOD grants.
Can we, can I, can I offer a suggestion? Can we have a robust conversation about these about these things? And then on the seventeenth, have the board kind of make some decisions about budget in terms of what we want to do about those positions? And have, and Lori, I'm I'm just wondering, would you be able to by the seventeenth, work with the people you need to work with to get those job descriptions to us? So that we can have a, take a look at that. And then also, Susan, if you could work with the unions around what that would, what the range it would be, would be helpful. But let's have a conversation about this stuff. Board, are you are you amenable to that, to kind of have us have a conversation and then bring it back on the seventeenth? Does that, is that, does that seem okay?
To have a conversation now?
To have a conversation now to kind of get us on that, on what our appetite on that, and then ask questions and then and then we have until the seventeenth to then, if we have more questions for the for the district to kind of do that, knowing that, you know, I'm I'm sorry to say this, knowing, knowing that Ted and Peter, we might not be able to get everything done this year, but at least we can at least step, start the path towards that as much as possible. So Ken, talk to us, please. Talk to me.
You want me to just go through this list? Or do you want, you want to, you want to
What makes the most sense? What makes the most sense for you?
So I'm thinking the job descriptions that would have to go in a board packet. So the board would have it ahead of time to have even a richer discussion, let's say, on the seventeenth. But I'll have to work with Lori and the AGSA on that as well. So
So board, or do you want to table this then?
No, I would like to lay out what all, what all these things are. So do you have kind of the parameters for what the proposals are? I think we spoke to the dean because moving to an assistant principal and what that would entail. And we can certainly discuss that, have further discussion around that. But if I could just kind of get you through the additional point five, we thought we were going to find some extra efficiencies when we moved to the two elementary schools, but because of the health program in addition and all the numbers of students, we we really needed that point five more, it doesn't say this, but more for the health curriculum than anything. So, you know, that differential is twenty eight. Can't read it.
Twenty eight, six, six, eight.
And then the conversion of the Apex Tutor position. So we have a tutor who is a, who is a certified teacher, but is paid as a tutor and has been for over the years. So if you don't have the certified position, which currently the athletic director does have, you would probably need someone as an oversight unless the high school can figure out another way to do it. But we do have the person who is in the program full time. But we need a sign off from a certified teacher for the kids' coursework. So, so that's where it says convert Apex Tutor position to a teacher. And then the full time tutor to support magnet themes. We've talked about having that farm to school component. The grant has will be discontinued after this year. So this is really kind of an extension of the grant that Bernie started. And to have someone who would split the three new magnet schools. So the the Thames River Magnet, you know, that has the environmental marine life science, and then the Mystic River Magnet, which has the Ingenuity and Play, and then the Discovery Magnet at Charles Barnum. So this this particular position would be able to support the three schools. Captain Kolnasky, I'll just remind you that they have a full time position for their magnet for STEAM. And in NEA, we have additional music, F T E, to support their magnet theme. But we're just asking for one to start with, to get this program going. And then you added in the retirements. We know that there are three. I think there might have been an additional one lately, but we're waiting to hear. And so that the cost differential from adding, you know, and and subtracting is really thirty two thousand, five hundred and fifty five, four. Did I read that right?
You did.
Okay. Or nine hundred and fifty four.
Thirty two, nine, five, four.
Okay. So that is for all these positions, that's the addition. You know, when we look at the retirement efficiencies, cost efficiency.
Susan, with that magnet position, the person that's helping develop the magnet themes for the three, is that a one time position, one year position?
Well, for now, it is a one year. The person may, you know, there is a person who may be getting certified as a teacher, but we will keep the board posted on that. But we're, for now, that's what we need.
So that one year, so that position of whatever that is at thirty five is actually a one year position.
Right.
And then the only other thing on that page was we did talk about adding a social worker at NEA and CB, which wouldn't have any social work support. And if and if we determine that that's due to the pandemic, this could be covered by the the CARES Act, too, that we that we receive, we haven't received the grant yet, but we've received some advanced instructions from the state. And and if we needed a social worker due to the pandemic, that would certainly be coverable by by the CARES Act, which could go for up to two years.
I think out to FY twenty three is what they were saying.
Right.
So the other thing is, there was some miscommunication in the paper about the actual amount. And but Ken did receive the actual amount from the Connecticut State Department of Education in the two to three million, but he has the actual number.
Yeah, three million, forty nine thousand. I don't have the dollars. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all. But remember that that, you know, is to supplement based on COVID. So a lot of that will probably be used for summer programming for our kids and accelerated learning and tutoring and, you know, really taking a look at assessments and finding out what students will need additionally after this experience or during this experience. So, you know, as soon as it comes in, we'll be able to, you know, really develop, or we will be developing a plan that I'll come back to the board with with that in mind.
So Susan, we we can't supplant anything in the in the budget with that grant.
Thou shalt not supplant.
Okay, thank you.
But there might be things that we have taken on because of this COVID that we might be able to make some adjustments. So know that if it's for that intended purpose and to recoup some of the things that have, you know, happened due to that, challenges. happened due to that, um, challenges, we can certainly use those funds. And a social worker is very appropriate. And that would really make sure that all of our schools would have coverage. Right now, Mary Morrison does not have a school social worker from the Board of Ed, and neither does Charles Barnum, and neither does, well, NEA and SBB are currently sharing one. But that's again through CARES Act.
So questions on the stuff that's on Ken's sheet? So that the staff can provide answers for us as we continue on to think about those positions. And once again, the, for me, it's the concept of approving or not approving, but like the monies for the one time position for the magnet schools to get them up and running. And I can remember conversations that Jay, you and I have had about when NEA and Catherine Kelnowski was being started and they didn't have anyone to or any funds available to help coordinate that. But that also those positions were looking at a $35,000 increase to the budget. Liz?
I have a question about the Apex Tutor. So is this the same person? Is this the AD slash Apex Tutor? Is that who this, is that what this is?
No, well, the the AD is the certified teacher overseeing that program. Because you, you know, it kind of requires certification to
Right.
sign off on kids' grades and all of that. There is a tutor who actually works with kids, you know, for the full day, for the full both days, you know, in this block schedule. And that person is a certified teacher, but he's working as a tutor.
Oh, okay, because I wasn't, I was unclear. I didn't realize that there was an additional person.
Good question, Rita. I mean, um.
Thank you. I'll take that as a compliment.
Lori?
I can I just add to the question about the tutor in the Apex program? Historically, when the program started, it was a much smaller population utilizing the the software applications. And it's grown significantly over time, so it's much more embedded than it used to be. So we have had to dedicate, you know, full time support to that as part, you know, as a portion of the regular ongoing needs of a high school. So I just wanted to clarify, while we've had it, it has, it has grown significantly. And it really should be monitored by a certified staff member versus a tutor.
Oh, my God, like, I'm going to tell everyone, your name is Rita. I have no idea what's happening. Sorry about that.
Take that as a compliment. I wanted to speak on behalf of the elevating the dean to a assistant principal position. In my view, it's essential to do that. In terms of cost, from what I'm gathering and what I'm hearing and understanding, is that the the merging of the of the position of the the summer school, the Apex programs, I'm sorry. Well, the the salary is going to be the same anyway, so there's not an increase in cost there. But this allows Erin, him, it's happening to me, Erin McGuire at the high school, to do that articulation between middle school and high school, which I think is essential. And then what it allows, when the dean moves up to the assistant principal, that opens the door for him to do evaluations. And I cannot tell you, I don't know how evaluations are being completed at the high school right now with with the number of people that are available to to do evaluating. And and that's absolutely essential in terms of guaranteeing excellence in in education for children. So I'm wholeheartedly backing the assistant principal, the dean to the assistant principal.
Thank you, Andrea. Jay?
So I'm just wondering if when this comes back to the board, could, Susan, could you have someone just come up with the justifications for these? You know, Lori brings up a fantastic point. It'd be great to see the growth in Apex. Dr. Ackerman brings up a fantastic point about, you know, integrating the middle school and the high school. But it would be nice just to see all of this in writing, you know, as
Good idea.
Yeah, bullet points, you know, I I'm just somebody that rather than taking in a hundred different voices, if I could see it in writing and then be able to to understand the justification.
Along with Ken's sheet, that probably would be helpful, be able to process that out. Jay, thank you.
And I'll be happy to to write mine down and send it to.
Thank you. That would be terrific.
Any further questions about this? I'm sorry, folks, I'm I'm really goofy around barometric pressure changes. And so like, I'm also, and I'm finding like, I should be like playing with my cat or something. So I apologize for losing my way. So Susan, if we're not hearing anything, I'm just going to also encourage the board that if you have questions or you have thoughts or whatever, to to send them off to Susan so that Susan can then process that with her staff so that we can have a enriched conversation. My sense is, is that it's, I'm going to be too bold to ask for it for tomorrow. So I think the next time that we talk about this in the budget is going to be on the 17th.
I would like to be able to get it in my board packet, though, this weekend.
That's I would love, I would really, really appreciate that. That would be great. Liz?
Um, I wasn't on the board when you had these magnet themed coaches or whatever you call them. And so could you explain what their responsibility is and the necessity of having these coaches? I don't understand that at all.
Well, so we have a STEAM magnet coach, Catherine Kolnowski, and it's more than just a coach. The person goes into the classroom, so there is embedded coaching in that, in the lessons that are provided. But there is really an extensive layout of STEAM activities and that tie in with the core curriculum, but are in addition to at every grade level. So there is a STEAM classroom, which is like a fancy science lab that has robotics and has all kinds of fancy things. And so kids come to that as a with their classroom teacher to be able to do these experiences. There's lots of competitions like the invention convention and a robotics night for parents. So there's a lot of additional partnerships with nests that this person helps orchestrate and plans for these evening events. So it's really, it's really what was the catalyst to make Catherine Kolnowski a magnet school. They had other ideas, but it morphed into this because of the, you know, the work of the teachers and the principal. And I'm not saying it as eloquently as Chris could do, but I'm trying on her behalf to say that it's really what made a big difference. And I can remember Mike saying that, you know, giving a lot of credit to this position that was the catalyst for the magnet theme. And I know I've seen it in Groton Middle School and the work that those coordinators and coaches have done to really get that magnet up and going. So it's coaching, it's facilitating, it's partnering with our partners in the community. There's a lot of work that goes into that.
So. Yep. Liz, once again, that that's really kind of great information. Because I, you know, people don't know what we don't know, right? So I appreciate you doing that. Susan, I'm going to have you move us along.
Okay. All right. So I know that we have both Sam and Denise. So I'm going to ask Ken, should we start with operations or should we do the the actual? Because the the one, I think Denise just has one page around the tuitions.
Okay, yeah, certainly. Let me just get there. So that's a page. Five dash one oh five. Let me get this here. Okay. All right, here's five dash one oh five. So this is our tuition page. The the first two functions, function four one one zero and four one 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 are regular education. The oh, it's the BOAG school ledger. And then the four one 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 is the public school. So those are the magnet schools, the LEARN and New London magnet schools. And then the bottom two functions, four one two one and four one two two are tuitions for special education. SE is special education. I'm going to change that to clear. And so these functions here, we're anticipating there to be no increase or no decrease year over year for the both of them combined. But we have moved the amounts around within these functions a little bit.
Before we get to this special ed piece, so just notice that in both the VOAG section at the top of the page, four one one oh, there is a decrease, twenty three thousand five hundred thirty nine dollars. Even though the cost of these magnets have gone up, we've seen a decline in enrollment in a lot of the magnets that they kids have chosen to come to Groton. And the same thing is true with the both the LEARN and the New London magnet schools. And we're hoping that that continues, especially now that we're going to be offering five elementary intra district magnet programs in two brand new schools. So you see over a hundred thousand dollars decrease in those magnet schools. So that is kind of the hope that that, you know, continues, that parents will still have choice. And they have lots of choice in southeastern Connecticut, not only within Groton, but also in the LEARN districted schools and the New London. So just to say that for regular ed before we go now to ed, and Denise can help us explain.
And one thing I will add on the regular ed, so that's assuming the same number of out of district students as this year go out of district next year. And so, yeah, if that, if we can continue the trend of more students staying in our our schools, we can see greater savings here. That's the hope. Okay. Do you want me to leave this up, Denise, or should I take it down?
Yeah, that would be really helpful, Ken, if you could leave it up. Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening again, everyone. I'm Denise Doolittle, Director, Pupil Services. I wanted to share with you some insight into these tuition accounts, starting with five, six, two, which is special education tuition. Those are board placements. You can see underneath five, six, three is special education tuition state placements. So there are two placing agencies when we're looking at students receiving educational services outside of the Groton Public School District. One is the board, that would be my office, either myself or the supervisors. The other would be state agencies. Those state agency placements have reduced mainly due to financial reasons. They consist of the Department of Developmental Services and DCF primarily. So you can see that in terms of our special ed tuition for the board placements, we are projecting an increase. We're going to talk a little bit about that when we look down at the last line, line five sixty two. We're really looking at a decrease on the non-public side. And we were shifting that fund, those funds up to public school. Ken, do you want to explain that a little bit better than I probably can?
Sure. The auditors made a more, they're trying to make a better distinction between public schools and non-public schools. So they've asked us to reclass how we're how we're classifying some of these placements. So some of them, we had previously identified as non-public schools, but they are actually public schools. So it so it looks a little funny, but it it is all the same numbers. It's just moving it around the page a little bit.
So I can give, thank you, Ken, I can give you an example for line five sixty two. A special education public school would be, for example, the LEARN Ocean Avenue Learning Academy or the Krick River Street School or Aces Whitney North High School. These are programs where we have students placed. Those are RESCs, both LEARN region, the Krick region, and the Aces region. And they they provide self-contained specialized schools, but they're considered a public school. Whereas if you look at line five sixty two under tuitions, non-public school, those are what the state terms approved private special ed programs. Some examples of those programs would be Bradley School, New London Regional, High Road School of New London, Joshua Center Southeast Program in Montville. Those are examples of of the approved private special ed programs. So in working with the auditors, we're trying to balance how we code these tuitions in the budget. So this is a correction that we're trying to make for next year. So overall, we did have Jody Moore, our administrative assistant for the Special Education Department, run some numbers for us. And overall, we are down two board placements this year. We're down three. These represent students, three state placements. And we're down one magnet choice placement. So we are seeing a decline statewide in terms of students having to be placed outside of the school district. We're not unique in that we're not necessarily seeing behaviors that are disrupting the learning because so many students are learning at home. We're dealing with a different issue in terms of participation and engagement. But for the most part, behaviors that disrupt learning, that are unsafe, that cause students to to need a more specialized program have have decreased overall. The other point I wanted to make when we look at these these tuitions is that we also have some students who require ongoing support in terms of secondary transition. But they're, they don't require the intensive services of our Transition Academy. So we do have some students who receive services with agencies in the community, like SHARP Training. Generally speaking, those students do not attend five days a week. They usually attend two to three days per week. And on the alternate days, they're working on job skills, obtaining a job in the community. That also impacts our our tuition numbers. Does anyone have any questions?
Take this down so we can see everybody.
I don't know about anyone else's sort of video or internet, but mine is going incredibly wonky, more so than me.
Was I, was I freezing?
Um, no. So if there is, Andrea, if you're not frozen, I am frozen and I am, and everyone on my screen is frozen. So if there is someone who actually isn't, that would be helpful to lead the next conversation.
You know, Ken, we can hear you and see you moving your fingers and talking.
Yeah.
So you don't look frozen to us.
Okay, so.
Nice and warm.
Oh. I am really glad about that. Unfortunately, I have no active photos for anyone.
And I've gone out and come back, and for some reason that worked.
Yeah, that I had to do that before.
To do that, but Andrea, in absence, can you just leave the rest of the continued conversation until I get back in? Thank you.
Well, I would, Susan, if I had the
So I think
agenda in front of me.
Anybody has questions of Denise, she can, she's here to answer them. And then she can off she goes to have dinner or something. And then we can move to Sam. So if anybody has any questions, though, before she goes, this is a good time to ask.
Thank you.
Liz, did you have a question?
Yeah, Denise, just the bottom line is it's a one point one.
Yeah, Denise, just the bottom line is it's a 1.1% increase overall. Am I correct in that?
Overall, yes, it is.
So, um. But I'm looking at, I don't see where that's at. So I see that, you know, I'm looking at the far right hand column. And.
At the very bottom.
Yeah, I see the very bottom, but isn't that supposed to be a. And the that number comes from everything that's on this page?
Yeah, that that very bottom, that very bottom, it's in blue, right? And it says point one on the very right hand side. That's the summation of everything, of all of the functions. This is the end of the book. And so that's the summation of everything.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a summation of just what's on the page.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Ken, to have the summation on the page and to somehow really highlight that's the total summation.
Yeah.
And a few notes, Liz, just to to and, you know, wrap up this section. We are seeing a decrease overall in these placements in every school except the Friendship School.
Yeah.
We have seen increases in the Friendship School. That's in Waterford. It services pre-K and K. Nadine Macklin is very busy there. That is the one school we have seen because this is the second year. That they have allowed students from towns other than New London and Waterford to attend. So last year it creeped up and this year it's creeping up as well. They do have, you know, full day pre-K. So we we do see an increase there. And then the other area we're seeing an increase is in our five oh fours. So we do have some schools that we work with in our region who we support. Marine Science in particular, some of those schools have a larger number of five oh four students. Amy is working with them on that. But in two thousand nine, the ADA was expanded and eligibility was expanded for five oh four. So for the most part. It's a broad eligibility category in terms of having a physical or mental impairment that substantially impacts the major life activity. And and we do see, we are seeing an increase in those numbers.
Denise, are you? You know, I'm I'm very concerned about people that are not being identified at this time because of this year's. You know, are you, are you prepared for seeing an increase next year and students being. Identified as special ed needing five oh fours? And how is that going to impact our budget if, you know, I mean, I don't see any cushion here. And this is a concern for me. Is because I have, I I I see people, I hear people say, well, I haven't had my child evaluated because they're home with me. Or haven't done that. And and so. I'm concerned here that we don't have the cushion available, you know, or or prepared for. And to see an increase in special education services.
Well, two, two quick points. One is that Susan is looking at an expanded summer program. Which will complement the special education summer program that's going to be at Northeast this year. Many of our high special needs students get a full day of programming from the school district for summer school and then with Eileen Chikese for Camp Button.
Okay.
Number one. And then number two, the students who are in the hybrid model are receiving. In many cases, a high level of instruction when they participate, the numbers in the classrooms, I know you've heard are very small. So when they do come in, the the instruction is very personalized. They are receiving instruction remotely as well. But for the most part, you know, we did put the numbers together for the board in terms of the number of students who are coming in four days per week. That is an option. And we do have a significant number of students coming in four days a week in many of our schools.
I'm just concerned about. The impact this COVID is going to have, especially in the special ed department.
It's definitely uncharted territory and. We are certainly learning, you know, as we progress through this pandemic. I'm worried about it too, to be honest.
Thanks, Denise.
Oh, Kim, you're back? I don't see Kim. Oh, she is.
She's on your left and right.
My front.
I had a quick, I had a question about the Friendship School, Denise. Is Denise still there? That 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 is a paid school now. It's like four thousand dollars. So are are these people that have paid tuition to go to the Friendship School? Or are they students that have a disability? And we're supporting them? How how is this working?
So if the student has a disability, the districts where the student lives pays the special education and related services tuition.
We also pay the base tuition for kindergartners. We do not pay the base tuition. For preschoolers. So a lot of preschoolers go to Friendship School and want to continue. And then in kindergarten, we pick up the bill.
And why, why do we do that in kindergarten? When we have schools?
Well, because it's an intra district magnet and it's a choice of the parents and we do that for New London as well. Yeah. So they get them in when they're three and it's.
Right.
You know, and they really like it. So they want to stay through kindergarten. So we actually, it's a good question. Rita, because really on this registration and putting out information to get kindergarten registration up. And to really figure out who needs to come in. She's also going to be. Doing a brochure that will be on the website and she's going to be sending it out to all of our students who are. In these magnet programs. So that they they have a choice in Groton and that there will be lottery. So we are working on that.
Right. Because we have a lot of slots for preschoolers. We have our two district wide programs.
Yeah.
Our our six, actually, we're up to seven integrated preschool programs. So we have, we have a lot of slots for preschoolers.
So that's wonderful to to advertise. Then the parents wouldn't have to pay four thousand dollars a year for, you know, three and four year olds.
Right.
I I do believe it's a sliding scale. I I know.
It is a it is a sliding scale, but I I meant the a normal price would be four thousand. It is a sliding scale. Yeah. And it's if you're in New London, it's free.
Any more questions for Denise? If not, we'll move on, Susan.
Yes, so we've got Sam. So let's march right through this, Ken, to Sam's operation budget. We've accomplished actually quite a bit. So.
We want to go to page five dash nine two and I will share that. Here. So this is page five dash nine two. As far as the FTEs. There is one reduction of one FTE under custodial that due to the. Elementary school consolidation. The rest of the positions, number of positions stay the same. As far as the dollars, you'll see under line one one seven custodial, there was a decrease. And that's reflecting that decrease of one custodian. So the total salaries are down twenty six thousand or just under one percent. Employee benefits are down a combination of what we've talked about before, as well as having one less FTE in this group. So that's showing down five point two percent.
And also the overall health savings that is taken from everyone, you know, is also shown in that, right?
That's right, correct. Professional services, these are services that we outside services that that we use for for maintenance such as Mystic Air Quality. That was the only one I had written down. But we were anticipating that being up five percent. Twenty six thousand two fifty. Then a total purchased property services. We have a reduction in, we've had some good few years of low snow removal of this past week. This week is probably going to. Challenge us somewhat. But we were anticipating a decrease of twenty thousand in snow removal. And then also general building repairs where we have a decrease of twenty thousand in that. As well. So overall, for for purchased property services down five percent or thirty five thousand dollars. Sam has one that goes over two pages. So if we could flip to five dash nine five. We have the purchase services is at the top of that page. And that's insurance, which we're anticipating an increase of eighty seven hundred dollars. Telephone, this shows a decrease of eighteen thousand six sixty six. And this reflects, we're moving some of some of these costs to the IT department. In that they manage the cell phones and some of the over the internet services. So. This cost of fifty thousand one forty four is just the cost for the actual phone lines that are coming into the buildings. So this this section shows a decrease of nine thousand eight eight two, but we're going to see a a increase on the IT side for telephones.
We receive a grant, aren't we receiving an alliance grant that's going to help support? You know, we need new phones. If you've ever noticed, we have a real problem with phones. So getting all the whole district, you know, up and at them is really going to be. Terrific. And it's a safety need, but we are getting some help and support from Alliance for. The different phones that, you know, in the schools outside of the brand new schools, I believe.
Yeah, it is. It's it's support to to implement a new phone system, not so much the the cost of the of the. Of the line. But they'll definitely put us in a much better position. But you're right, the Alliance Capital Grant. And then for supplies, it shows an increase of a hundred and sixty five thousand, almost a hundred and sixty five thousand, nine point seven percent. This is being driven by our electricity in our heating, cooling costs. We're anticipating that these two new buildings, while being very efficient. Have a lot more services. They have air conditioning. They have air handling. It's 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 it's. It's going to be efficient, but but it will probably cost us a little bit more as well. We're anticipating carrying some of the existing buildings for a period of time. Into the beginning of next year before they get turned over to the town. So I am hoping that when we look at this next year's budget, that this this number actually will be flat, if not slightly less next year. But we wanted to make sure we made some. Allocation for the older buildings that we're going to have to carry. In custodial supplies, we have an increase as well of almost sixteen thousand dollars. That's what's driving that nine point seven percent increase. Under equipment, we have ten thousand dollars. This is to cover some of the some of the equipment that that Sam has to buy. He can probably expound better on it, but I know vacuums and and the things of that nature come through come through this line. And then a small amount for dues. So overall, an increase of forty five thousand two two seven. For operation maintenance, a point seven percent increase. Now stop sharing.
Sam, is there anything that you wanted to add to this discussion? Before I take questions?
I'm muted. No, I didn't have anything else to add unless somebody has a particular question.
Any particular question that's directed towards Sam or actually his budget, not to Sam? Because that would be rude. Barometric pressure, I tell you, it's the barometric pressure. There's a storm coming in. Yes, Dean?
Um, maybe this was covered earlier, but I heard the word Alliance. My impression was the Alliance money is going away. So.
This was a specific, because we are an Alliance District, this was a specific grant that we applied to, capital grant. And we really wanted to put our efforts kind of into this phone system so we can make sure that it's a real, you know, up to date, safe. Phone system. So we were able to take care of some of that through that, through that.
There will be Alliance money for this.
What's that?
There really will be Alliance money for this.
Well, it's called the Alliance Capital Grant.
Okay.
Funds, you can speak to that, Ken. I know I've read through it, but I don't remember the exact amount for each.
It was a one time, what they call a buildings grant. It's it's for all Alliance districts. They each get an amount. And it's just to 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 take care of some capital improvements that they typically can't do because they're they're spending a lot of their funding on on. Getting all their numbers up and that type of thing.
Right. The other item that we got through this grant is we we will be replacing the fire alarm system at Charles Barnham School. Seeing as that's a school that we're going to be keeping the. The study that we had done by the architects determined that the fire alarm system needed to be brought up to code. So that will be taken care of through this, the same grant, and that work will be done over this coming summer.
Instead of bringing a CIP request to the town, this really is a nice offset to that. You know, that we can take care of this through this grant. So I appreciated the effort of everybody putting together and prioritizing these things that needed to happen.
Yeah, thanks. I just heard the word Alliance and the flag went up. So.
Well, they're still supposed to be, Dean. We're supposed to be still receiving three hundred thousand this year, but. You know, it hasn't come. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on.
All right, we're going to move to page five dash nine six. And I will share. So this is our transportation function. So as far as FTE, same number of FTEs, both clerical as well as the as the bus aids. And then under the dollars five dash nine seven. Each slight increase in salaries, two percent. Employee benefits, zero. There is an increase under other purchase services. This is the, this is what we pay to STA and Curtain. And you'll see an increase of. Overall for purchase services, three hundred and seventy three thousand seven fifty seven or seven point nine percent. This is reflecting the. The the board having to to cover the four buses that had previously been paid by the MSAT grant. So this this reflects sixty five regular buses or I'm sure, I'm sorry, sixty five buses from STA. That's the total total of our total of our fleet. As well as an amount for Curtain. That's this line five twelve for. For the the pickups that they do that are not on regular routes. So that's what's driving that increase. And then we're hoping we get back to to normal and we're and we're utilizing the. The fuel that we would have anticipated normally. And so that's a little over two hundred thousand dollars for the fuel. A small increase, point seven. Total increase for this section, three hundred and eighty five thousand or seven percent. Being driven by the by those four buses that no longer are being picked up by MSAT.
Jay?
So Ken, I know this probably comes up every year, but if you could just remind me, the fuel for this year, was it prepaid, non-refundable?
Not prepaid. We we entered into a contract, so we'll have to fulfill that contract. Last year, what we did when we had excess fuel was we held it over and we were able to. Utilize that fuel. I have a feeling we're going to be in the same position this year.
So we'll be able to recover some of that. Two hundred thousand if we don't use it.
That's correct.
But the other contracts basically are. Well, definitely with STA. That number is really not going to change.
Yeah, it's 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 the it's the sixty five buses, the cost per daily cost per bus next year. Yeah, it's, it's, it's the, it's the 65 buses, the cost per, daily cost per bus next year is $356 and 3 cents per day, which is a 3% increase, which was contractual.
Okay.
And I want to say that I, after Kim and I had a conversation and I've talked to Sam and Ken about this and Dennis, the company that we use, the software that we use called TransFinder that helps us with our routes. They have an audit service and they actually said many districts do this every five years, but in light of the fact that we're going to have five magnet elementaries and we have this extra four buses that we paid for, this is a perfect opportunity to have an audit done for transportation. And you know, still a lot of it will be prediction. They've already told us it's a little more complicated this year because of the pandemic. But we're going to actually take the data from Malone and McBroom to try to get the best efficiencies and, and put that together with this TransFinder audit so that we'll have a, a better picture, a clearer picture of what we're talking about. So I'm, I'm trying to get that to move along as fast as we can. Sam, did you want to add to that?
I, I just wanted to add to the leftover fuel at the end of a season. Over the course of the last few years, we've, on a couple of different occasions, we've had additional fuel at the end of the season. And you have a choice of paying to put it somewhere. You could, you could rent space and, and hold on to that fuel for the next season, or you can sell it off at a slightly reduced number. So dependent upon how much we have and what the going rate is at that time, Ken and I take a look at that and, and make that determination at that time as to what's better for the district. So it, we've done it both ways. I think it was last year that we actually held the, held, held on to the oil and then used it because it was going to be cheaper to do that than to sell it off.
That's right. Yeah, you're right, Sam.
Any other questions about that? I'm excited about getting an audit done.
Me too.
As excited as you can be.
About a bus audit.
I love audits myself, but.
You.
Yeah. All right. If I'm not here, I know Dean, I'm sorry. It's really is the barometric pressure. Like there's a storm coming in, I can tell you. Um, next, Susan.
So we had another section with teaching and learning. We do that, or did you have something else that we missed? Did I forget something?
I'm sorry. No. Well, we, we, there is a computer services.
Let's go on and do that because we can always hold that teaching and learning is just a small portion. So we could hold off on that till tomorrow night.
Yeah, but then I, I clicked the button and I lost my.
It's just because you were excited about having an audit done.
You know, got me all.
Oh, it's a sign to hold it till tomorrow.
Okay.
You remember this section?
I do. It's, it's page five dash nine eight. All right. And I'm going to share that. Okay. Oh, I need a bigger. Okay. So this is a computer support services. So the FTE numbers, no change. Still have the director of IT, the administrators and the six computer techs and the one admin assistant. Five dash nine nine dollars. So a slight increase in salaries and wages, 2%, which is our placeholder. Employee benefits, as Susan alluded to before, it's, it's the reduction of group insurance across the board. There is, the next section down is professional services. That is an overall increase of 4,293 or 2.7%. You know, a lot of, lot of computer services, a lot of internet services get charged in this line. Next line down is purchase property services. And you'll notice that's up considerably 56.6%. What you're seeing here are, it's the, the, the copiers. We are in the midst of switching all of our copiers over to a print management solution. Meaning we'll be able to print to any copier, copier slash printer in the district. And in order to do that, we, we need, we get, we're getting additional copiers. But there's a reduction down below as an offset. But that's what's driving that increase is additional copiers and the print management solution.
Actually a great efficiency to that. I've been in a district with that kind of a plan where you have to use your badge when you go to collect the items. So you don't have a lot of waste and you can also track the usage, you know, per building, you know, per department. So, and then they're, they're newer. So we have less, you know, fixing of the, the copiers and then we don't have, we won't be replacing those individual copiers that were in every classroom. There's also the ability to have more color copy print, and I think that's less expensive than those individual little copiers too, with the print, with the ink. So there is this efficiency, but getting this up and at them, there, you know, you see the cost, the extra, you know, 40 plus thousand dollars.
That's right. Right below that is the telephones. That's that decrease that we saw over in the, the maintenance function. That was the cost of the lines. This is the cost of cell phones and the, the IT side of it. So that's why that's showing up here. So there's a corresponding decrease there, but an increase here. So overall for other purchase services, it looks like a big increase, 87.9%, but it's a 16,260 increase. Line six 10, this is the decrease in the, in those individual printers at the, in the classrooms. So this kind of offsets what we're seeing above for the, for the copiers. We'll no longer have to, to pay for those, for those, that equipment. So that's, that's a decrease. Computer software is an increase of 17,375. This is just, this is an increase just in the, in the cost for the different software, you know, packages that we have, whether it's the Power School, the e-finance for, for my group. It's the cost of TransFinder that we talked, spoke about earlier, all, all the different pieces of software that are operational, not curriculum based.
Non-instructional.
That's correct. Yeah. So that's an increase of 17,000. Overall for supplies, it's a, it's a small decrease of 5,125. And then under equipment, overall, an increase of 44,539 that also shows a very big percentage increase because it's off of a budget last year of 38,812. But th- these are costs for maintaining and upgrading our infrastructure. So all the, all the devices can, can connect and do, and do what they're supposed to be doing. Overall for computer support services, an increase of 103,183 or 5.7% increase.
Liz? We're muted.
Liz, you need to unmute.
I think she just waved to say she was.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Is it time?
There are a couple of small ones. I'm, I hate to.
Let's do the small ones and let's get, let's get these underneath the belt. Andrea, we're already, you know, we're already February 8th. I get worried.
Yeah, well, we have one tomorrow night. So.
Yep, we have a lot to go through.
I know.
So I'm going to do these two small ones and then then I will take it down. So this is page five dash 100. This is health services. So these are, this is this is really just, it's a budget of $2,500 for inoculations and I think that's all it really is, testing to pathogens. It's a same as we budgeted last year. So I'm just going to move on. You can stop me if you want. And then five dash 102 is non-public pupil transportation. And so we are, we are mandated to transport students to Sacred Heart. And we
Grosso or?
No, just to Sacred Heart. I mean, we, we are mandated to, to transport the students to Grosso as well, but we don't break that one out.
We're getting your.
We're seeing your inbox.
You are.
We're looking at your email. Yes.
That's strange.
So that's kind of fun.
It all looks very professional. I just want you to know.
Thank gosh, right? All right. Here is non-public. Do you see that one?
Yes.
I don't know how, when that happened.
I keep telling you, it's the sign.
We did decrease this slightly because our experience over the past two years has been less than the, the 110 that we had budgeted, 115 that we budgeted in the prior year. So we reduced this this one by 18,450 or 16% decrease.
It reflects what we are actually doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those are the two little ones that I want to make sure we didn't, didn't forget.
Any?
Messages.
Oh, Liz's, um, computer has crashed. Which was sort of what my experience was. Anything else, folks?
The computer slash crash. We saw the email. I'm telling you. Time. Motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Any other discussion? I guess we don't need a discussion for motion for adjournment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Tonight, Gracie.
Oppose. Abstain. The motion is carried. Ken, thank you so much for putting all this together. You do an amazing.
Yeah, you do. Thank, and Susan too. Thank you so much.
I'm glad we were able to get through some of that. And yeah, so thank you.
And we got your message, Susan. About remote tomorrow.
I think all of southeastern Connecticut is going that way, or most of us.
Yeah, most of the state. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the northern part of the state is supposed to get hammered, not us. No, not us. Yeah.
It's just going to be a mess.
Yeah, I'm praying for rain.
All right. Bye, guys.
Bye. Say well.